January 9th.
Yeah.
It is being recorded and will be on YouTube. Starting to cover Bob before he yells at me again. Uh, all right, what's it in both place somebody like to make a motion?
I think we want to see if there are other things we should.
Do you?
Unless they can.
We want to show.
Yeah, he's been out playing forty-eight hours.
Oh, he must be. Sorry. Sure.
I can't, I can't.
So who, somebody take a motion.
Did she have something else she need to add?
I'll make a motion that we accept the site plan as is.
Second motion.
Second, any further discussion? All favor. You don't have this. Thank you very much. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck with the conservation next week.
Yes, sir. Well, I know what to say, but I seen that few.
This one, yeah.
Um, so the MBTA to share.
So he has something else?
Well, so they sent us this. Um, Steve has some comments about the last map that he would like to discuss.
Okay.
Before I so rudely interrupted you. My friend.
Melissa, do you want this?
Sure.
For us. Hi. Steve, you have something you'd like to say?
Uh, I just, I wasn't able to get to the last meeting when they were discussing it until the last time I was here. Um, you know, the options that were on the table at that time.
What's before was.
No, sorry, the MBTA.
Yes, the MBTA. Does he have a question on the MBTA?
I can show him the map, I've got it on my phone now.
Yes.
Melissa sent me an email. Okay, so turn it over to her.
I've seen that.
You've seen it.
Yeah. So, um, I probably should have done the same thing. So I guess the last time I was here, um, the option was more South Avenue, um, and not going down the industrial.
That would like, sorry.
Um, it, I guess at that last hearing that I wasn't here, then this decision was to stop looking more going into the industrial park.
Yes, sir.
Um, which I just think from the town of Whitman's point of view is a huge mistake. And, um, that industrially, you've got basically two industrial areas that in my view are successful or vibrant. That area is pretty full, um, and you've got the area along, you know, from the Wallace Street way to the Brockton line. Um, and that's really all you've got for industrial. And if you put your, the zoning bylaw act over that, you're, you're asking for people to get rid of, you're gonna force those businesses out. Um, because it's not gonna make any sense, it's gonna, those are gonna, worth more financially, those lots, than if you did them as, um, commercial. So, because they're large, open lots. Whereas when you're, the original, do you mind if I?
Done, go ahead.
So the original plan that you guys had was more over the general business area?
Yes, come over the south out.
Right. So when you're looking at that area now, you have, most of those lots coming down the road are ten thousand square feet. Most of them are two families and three families, some four families, some five families on those two thousand square foot lots, ten thousand square foot lots. You have some commercial mixed in. Very few single families left on that road. The Dennis O'Briens old house is probably single and a few along Park Avenue, the rest of them are all, they're multi-family houses. So under the Density Act of what the state's asking you guys to do, Whitman's kind of in the rare instance that you almost meet it anyway. Our density is already there. Where I was looking at the town of Hanson's proposal, which is basically taking an area like you're seeing in red, and that's gonna be the new, and it's all raw land.
Right.
Super advantageous, you can get it low cost, it's raw land, you're gonna see volumes of units there. Whereas along here, if you leave it on here, I think you're gonna see very little change, because these two families are worth six fifty now. The three families are going for seven fifty to nine hundred thousand dollars. The four and five families are a million bucks for these properties now. Someone's not buying those to tear them down with the, what's gonna be the allowed density under, under the state's requirements, which is fifteen units per acre. So when you take a ten thousand square foot lot, under the, the state's regulations, you can do three point five units. Well, you already have two, three, and four units, so someone's not gonna take them down and do large scale developments. They're also not gonna buy two and three or four of those ten thousand square foot lots and spend seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand. They're worth more with the houses on them, where you could go into a different town and, and pick up what, some large space. Whereas if you go over to the industrial park, they're big lots, they're bigger lots, and those owners of those industrial lots are gonna start looking at, I can have one commercial tenant, or I can put up fifteen or twenty units, or I can combine a few of them. And I think you're gonna see over time, you're gonna take that industrial park and it's gonna be an Obama complex. At the end of the day, I think you're gonna force those owners to say, I can, I can rent my commercial building for forty-five hundred dollars a month, or I can do a fifteen unit apartment building and rent it for thirty thousand dollars a month. And you tell me which direction that's gonna go.
Yeah.
When you look at the area that you guys originally were proposing down here.
We still use the south out.
Not, not.
That's my tip.
You're basically using the, the, uh, Regal Shoe and a little bit on Raynor Avenue, and you're using behind the old Babians and, and what used to be Grossman's back in the day. Um, and I think those areas there would be fantastic. I think you could, you know, Whitman, when you look at some of the other downtown areas, because we're doing, we're doing a mixed-use project in Hanson now down near their train station. Whitman's center is far better off than most of the towns in the area. It's much more vibrant, it's full, the Rockland and that, some of these towns would kill to have some of the stuff going on here. But this area here in Whitman and some of the other towns, this could be a very walkable, vibrant area like in our next decade. We have issues here where we don't downtown. Regal Shoe's got major contamination issues, and I looked at the property, it's very expensive to clean it up. Um, the old Grossman's that the, the town has wanted for years something to happen and maybe take back, it won't, it's because of contamination issues. Dell's old garage, contamination issues. You'll probably see something where the old Babians was in the apartment building next door, that piece is big enough that you'll probably see someone tear it down one day and do something on it. But as you go down the road, I don't think, I think putting it over that district, for instance, John can tell you too, this overlay, the mixed-use overlay district is already here too. So you approve this as, um, if you prove it with the state's density regulations, three point five for ten thousand square feet, mixed use is unlimited. If I can provide the parking, there's no, there's no density, there's no, uh, density requirement under the mixed-use overlay district. And it doesn't even have to be on my lot, I could have the people parked two doors down as long as it's within five hundred feet. So I could, if I wanna maximize my units, mixed-use overlay would be more, a better route for me to go than, than this new district. Because you're laying it over a district that already gives you density ability.
All right.
So I just, I would be hesitant, and again, this is my opinion, there's other opinions out there, you guys may decide differently, but I, when I saw it, I'm like, you know, I know I'm a real estate developer, everyone's all, what's he up to? There's a real, you know, there's a motive here. I'm a Whitman resident and I do believe, no one likes development as you could just see in the last hearing. Um, and that's how, hey, people get upset by it. People don't understand that wetland lines are agreed on, that every property needs to have some sort of drainage, it needs to have a basin, you can't do a commercial building without it now. But we know that, but people come in and they don't. And they think that something's up, but responsible development's important. And, you know, I'd said when I emailed off that, you know, that Whitman is for years, you know, from the time that they kicked the Foxconn company out of the Bridgewater, you know, there's been, we need commercial development, we need commercial development. And to do something that's gonna push out our limited industrial base, I think's bad. And Route eighteen, I think should be another focus, not on this, but not for the, for, for changing the zoning, but you know, it's coming this way, Waymouth is built up on eighteen, now into Abington. In the next ten years, I think you're gonna see it go through Whitman and probably into the Bridgewater's. And I think you're gonna see that car come down and we're finally gonna get probably a little bit more commercial along, along that road. But I think we should save the industrial areas that we have. But when you look at what, what the dollar will bring in a month, you put residential, that's what you're gonna get there.
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Yep.
What is your position on Pond Street, that property that you don't know is bad?
I, I think it falls in, it's, it falls into the other group that, you know, it's, that would be very expensive to clean up to do residential. I know the people bought it and they wanted to do a forty B, they wanna do residential.
They wanna do mix.
They're gonna spend a ton of money to get to that.
Yeah.
Which is why the people who recently bought Regal Shoe, bought it in cash and left it alone. It's a company that owns industrial buildings, no one who, you know, we looked at it, a lot of people looked at it.
Yeah.
But you're, you were talking between demo and cleanup, you're millions.
So did the people, so that Pond Street thing, they were proposing two hundred and forty units of mixed use, not just all forty B?
Yeah.
Did they actually buy the property?
Yeah, I believe they own the property, yeah, that property did close.
Yeah, they do own it.
Yeah.
So, this is kind of off topic, but why aren't they required to clean it up or is it in process?
I think that's with stalling everything right now, um, I think.
Okay. But there's, there's a possibility they would.
A lot of times, you know, cleanups don't kick into effect until someone wants to do something.
Does, uh.
So they're not doing it again. You know, we know it's contaminated, we know Regal Shoe's contaminated, we, we know the old Grossman's contaminated. But DEP's not saying, you gotta do something today, but as soon as you wanna go in there and do something, well, you gotta do it now. And that, that's when that, that would be triggered, you know? And I would love to see, I hope, something comes up, maybe federal government money or whatever, and that you do see Regal Shoe get redeveloped, and I think it would be fantastic down there to have a, you know, the park looks fantastic, Hobbit's Pond looks fantastic. I'd love to see that Green Wake coming down the boulevard, come right down by the waterfall and connect all the way down.
Yeah.
You could even, you know, they just did it, I don't wanna get on side topics, but they did it in Rockland and Hanover, I don't know if you saw the old rail line. But, you know, now you have Hobbit's Pond now, that's all cleaned up, and then the, everything's coming down the boulevard, and as you go down into Hanson here, there's, there's really a lot of availability to continue walking trails along the, the train station. And this, in a very short period of time, you'd be surprised how quick, you're out in Burridge and Hanson. And these are all areas that could be connected town to town and have long, you know, kind of walking bicycle trails through somewhat rural areas. And some of it would hit the golf course and stuff, but it's something that, you know, no one ever would have thought you would have connected Abington to Hanover with theirs either, you know?
All right. Appreciate that, thank you.
That's my two cents.
This.
I don't know if your board was, had anything on the agenda discussing this zoning, or is this just open discussion?
You're gonna have, say, we're already on that topic now, so go right ahead.
Oh, sure. So I was here two meetings ago, I think, or several meetings ago, so I've missed a few in between. Um, but during that time, um, the presentation was, and the discussion was around expanding, um, or, or including the zoning for, um, MBTA communities over to Essex Street, which, which is adjacent to, um, Hobart's Pond and the Boulevard. So walking there, and the discussion at that time was that there's commercial zoning, I'm sorry, industrial zoning there now. And, but the feel of that area could be residential and therefore it would be suitable to housing. Um, and I feel that if you zone that multi-family housing and over the industrial, right, is that what the?
It's overlay, yes.
So it could remain as an option for industrial, so any private business owner that is using that for industrial now wouldn't be forced out or pushed out?
Would be forced, maybe good, like Steve said, just be like, I get more money if I just build something.
And, and that would be an independent owner's choice, right?
Yes.
That's their property, that's their choice, and, and that's, and I sat here in that meeting and I did say, if there's anyone that wants more housing, it's me. I said, we have a housing shortage, and, and my, my goal is to turn my single family home over three bedrooms to a family, so that I could sort of downsize, right, to that smaller house, that's, that's the natural progression that, that we hope in this housing shortage. So I, I think that giving that option to industrial owners that are along that area of Essex Street, um, that would, is somewhat residential already, um, I, I would agree with that.
Mr. Chen.
Yes, sir.
The only difficulty there, and I don't know who owns what, but the speed's point, is it may not be the tenant that's there now. It may be owned by somebody else who's gonna pretty much force the tenant out, because they know they can sell it and build.
Fair enough, but that's any renter, right? If you were renting an apartment and a home, it's like multi-family.
Yep.
I think it's important to consider that, because if it was owned by the people that are there and they have a successful business there, no one's gonna force them out. But it, it becomes a, a different story by who owns the land there.
Absolutely, the owner's the owner.
Yeah.
And so I don't know the plan is involved, it sounds like some people know.
Yeah, just so you know, I'm not, I am, I don't know if she knows, I'm a real estate developer, I am pro housing, I'm not trying to make comments about there would be none, just so you know.
It wasn't towards you, it was more so that you've said, it seems like nobody wants more housing, I do want more housing.
No, no.
That's.
I'd like to have a little more hearings, because the. It's always, don't want it, Joe. I just think the town really needs to, the state's saying, you have to do this.
Right.
But I think the, the town needs to take a breath and say, what is, what is our vision for Whitman for the next twenty years?
Yeah.
And the fact, let's use this as, that we have to do it as an opportunity to, to put it the way that we wanna do it and not just put it in, you know?
Let's get, like, when they first came to us, they gave us the three scenarios, we've had two meetings, we kinda took this from this, we had said something has to.
And I hate coming in the last minute, I, I did try.
No, I get it.
The, the, the hearing, they didn't show up the hearing, I guess the way, and it's like.
You know, like, what I just said, what I was trying to say is, we brought, everybody kinda put their two cents in, this is something that has to get passed the town meeting.
Yep.
So we're trying to implicate a little bit from everybody.
Yep.
You know, and the best of Justin when he was here, of what we thought would be the best way to go forward.
Yeah.
So.
Well, can you give us one? Oh, speak frankly, I think Steve too, the appeal to that last, um, suggested scenario might have been sort of that, well, it's tucked away. It's tucked away, you can walk right up to the train, uh, wouldn't really affect the, the look of, of now, that, you know, the fact that it would be tucked away was like a plus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was one, we, we did talk about, when we did take away from self-out, we did talk about some of the sizes of the lots that wouldn't conform to what we needed to do with the MBTA.
Yeah.
So some of those lots, a lot of those lots would have been excluded if we tried to overlay through all of those.
Yeah.
So that was one of the reasons we decided they wanted to go up Pond Street.
Yeah.
And stuff, just so, to fill you in on what was talked about at the last meeting.
Yeah.
But when I, I'm wrong, somebody else did most, but I mean, that's what a lot of people were saying, the certain, the lots have to be certain sizes.
Yeah.
And I do, a lot of the lots that Sarah was saying weren't big enough.
Yeah.
To, to fall under that, so that's why, one of the reasons we had to go a different though.
Yeah.
So, but John?
Um, Steve, I'm glad to hear, and that's a really useful perspective.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. Um, I was one of the ones with the last meeting, said, no, don't go on self-out, go, go up the industrial park. And so, you know, my thinking was, you know, without, you know, what you had to say about, about developers wouldn't take down the buildings on self-out, I guess my concern is that they would, that over time, we lose a lot of these beautiful old buildings, and they're already helping families, so, you know, we're meeting the intent, but somebody would knock them down with something, you know, three stories tall and bigger and so forth. So I guess it's kind of a roll of the dice, whether how the economics would work out there. And, you know, for the industrial park, I guess I'm looking at it again over the next twenty years, you know, are, are those viable spaces? Are they, you know, underused in a sense? If, if indeed they'd be that much more variable as residential space, maybe that's what they ought to be over time.
And that, that's the town's, it's, the town's always looking for commercial, and that's, I, I think, and you will see time that that'll, but that may be the town's vision.
Yeah.
I, I think we should try and keep the businesses there, I think there is a need for industrial in, in, in the town, but, um, that's.
That was the other big concern, was trying to stay off of eighteen also.
Yes.
And plus eighteen's over than half a mile of the train station, but.
Yeah, we want, we wanted eighteen preserved for commercial.
Right. So just to answer what you were saying, that's why I brought that up.
And I think, you know, another reason I had, which I think you alluded to, is, you know, politically going to town meeting, being able to say, yeah, we're, we're meeting the requirement of MBTA, we're providing areas of multi-family housing, and we're not really pinching on residential areas. You know, for the, for the NIMBY people, the, the areas we're talking about in Industrial Park and on Essex Street won't affect anybody.
Melissa, yeah.
That's, it's easier sell and, you know.
But like, their first scenario had section here, section here, section here, like, no, that ain't gonna work. And that was just trying to incorporate what we had already and stuff like that, we tried to make it in a reasonable.
It was a good starting point, right?
Well, that's where we're getting anyway, you know?
It's like, if we did this, then that's what it would be.
You know, so.
Yeah, we wanted to remove some of those spotty satellite locations which are useless for what we're trying to.
Like, I don't know the whole town either, so it makes it hard to get the top on it, but.
I know what you're saying about existing density too, I'm following that logic, we just felt that out of everything we were, we were given, what we have here, and we did kind of pull some, you know, little, it's concentrated, it suits the law, and it's what, where we decided it would be best.
They seem to do the best feedback when who was here last, I'm not trying to say because you weren't here.
Yeah.
I really don't, that's what we ended up.
I think also the size of the lots, as you said, was an issue.
That was an issue, yes.
Some of those lots themselves, they have to even be counted by, by, by the state. Um, but also, if, if we're gonna have multi-family, let's, let's have some, you know, big enough lots, you can put a nice looking multi-family, not a cram, cram something into a ten. You know, we're proposing ten thousand square foot as a minimum.
Right.
But, you know, frankly, I hate to see, you know, some, something really trying to cram a multi-family into a ten thousand square foot lot, particularly if it's surrounded by one and two family houses.
Yeah.
Whereas these parcels on Essex Street and Industrial Park are bigger parcels, you can actually put a multi-family there, still have green space amenities and all, and.
It worked for the acreage and the, and the ratios that we had in E2, which was a big thing too.
So, even in the industrial park, are you proposing ten thousand square feet?
I don't, I believe that's what the parameters we set to Barrett Corp. I believe that's what it was, right, Barrett Corporation, that's what the, uh, the parameters we gave them, that we're gonna use, that's what other neighboring towns have used and stuff. Hello, Justin?
Again, Steve, to be useful, the here, your perspective, um, what a minimum lot size for, you know, economically viable multi-family is.
Well, I think in the industrial park, I mean, you know, if someone would take a look at it and say, oh, there's ten thousand square feet, and I have thirty thousand square feet, and I'm better off doing three multi-family buildings and separating this, I'm like, better off doing one large multi-family, which I would think one large would be, that might be.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so I, I don't even see much need subdivided over there for that, but typically, the bigger the better. That's from a development point of view, sort of size and number of units.
Like the building you did on, on Washington Street, um.
That's forty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
That's some, almost anything.
You know, it's nice, though.
Do you have another one, John?
Um, yeah, just to follow up, as far as your next steps as a board, will you have an agenda that post what you're actually approving for the final zoning that then goes to town meeting?
That's what we're gonna work on tonight, we have to, uh, schedule a town meeting, a special meeting for that before town meeting.
Here.
A public hearing, so I guess.
Yeah.
My verb is just always correct.
Right.
Yes, so that's.
Then you will all decide.
We're trying to get on for this town meeting, right, for May?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
So, that's what we're trying to work on tonight, to try to get something on for, will it May?
Yes.
Yes.
I wanna say May sixth.
And we have to, yeah, we have to get that in, for public hearing pretty quick.
Mr. Chen.
Yes, sir.
I made a couple of comments, um, like I say, I've walked the town a lot, and I was walking up Essex Street a couple of weeks ago, and after I selected and voted not to change the tax and increase the tax on commercial property, industrial property, and saying, well, if we're doing that, why isn't anybody rushing to Whitman for industrial property? You know, we haven't seen, I've been here thirteen years, I haven't seen anybody come in and try to do anything industrial. Why not? So if, and I understand your point, Steve, relative, and I was thinking that in my head too, do we wanna take all this industrial property away? But I don't see anything coming in. Um, the majority of the stuff that's over there right now is second generation cheap stuff. And I'm not talking any company that's over there, there's some good companies over there, but it's relatively underutilized space. If I could get an Amazon warehouse in there without all the traffic, it would be good. But I haven't seen anything even close to coming in the last, um.
Far from highways.
What?
Too far from the highway.
Yeah, that's one of the problems. I went through Raybrow's industrial park yesterday, and that's a fantastic, um, thing. It brings a lot of money into the town, it's right on the highway, we're off the highway. So, I, I appreciate your comments, Stephen, I was thinking a little bit the same on that.
I get stuck in a TK every morning. So, anybody else have any other comments, or any two cents?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Good seeing you guys, thanks.
Steve, I appreciate you, I'm just, thank you. That's how I was just reading next, so.
Well, I can give you guys an update that I sent, um, the, after the last meeting, I sent an email over to Sarah with, you know, the updated map that we had set. I let her know all of our upcoming meetings in a, in a tentative timeline that we would need to follow to be able to get this to the May town meeting. Um, and we're just waiting to hear back on.
Yeah, so.
If that timeline is doable.
Right, so it's the next, uh, scope of work, so, uh, the grant that we received, that work has already been completed, so now the stage two. So, um, the town has applied.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess our planning group is working on the scope of work, which would be writing the bylaw, I believe.
So I can, you want me to read this, what this came from Barrett, if you want me to read this, so everybody has.
That's the one that you've got, that you sent me.
Yeah, it says, next step in initial regulatory review findings. So it's, now the town is close to finalizing a proposed district location, the next step is begin drafting language in zoning bylaw. First town should consider what is acceptable for key dimensional regulations shown in table one, but can't show that to everyone. Next need to consider other areas of Whitman's current zoning bylaw that might conflict with the MBTA community compliance guidelines. The town could avoid many potential conflicts between MBTA community guidelines and local zoning by proposing a new district overlay district. The overlay can allow developers to override, which is what we're doing. Preliminary observations reviewing the town's bylaw include, the town's current definition of multi-family does not match exactly what the definition used by HLC, which is multi-family housing means a building with three or more residential dwellings, units of two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling, unit in each building. The town may require a site plan review for multi-family development, should consider whether the existing two forty dash seven point two site plan approved is adequate for this purpose. Whitman's floodplain watershed protection districts do not appear to conflict with the proposed sites. Whitman's environmental performance standards do not present any immediate issues under the MBTA community guidelines. In two, two forty seven point three, multi-family dwelling apartments, there shall not be more than eight units, eight units per building. Is unlikely that this requirement would be, would not be compatible with MBTA community requirements. Multi-family dimensional requirements may be fine as is, but should be checked to ensure they do not conflict with any modeling. A town, the town needs to ensure that all required parking building area and open space, which includes setbacks, can actually fit into the lots we are molding. So, that's what they said. That sounds pretty reasonable, but it's fair, I'll let everyone know, because I don't think everybody has this, um, at least it's on the record too. So if a slur is thrown, then all.
So, when are we gonna get a draft copy of the bylaw? That's the next step.
That's the next step, that's what we're looking to find out.
The problem is, if we're gonna have to meet April, or May sixth, whatever it is, you know, come back and. And I come back and I have to have a public hearing so many days in for that, so I have to have it probably the end of March sometime.
I think Melissa.
So we would need to, we would need to have the bylaw, the proposed bylaw by February twenty seventh. Because the board would have to vote to say, yes, this is what we think, and we need to send it off to the Board of Selectmen.
What was that date?
That's February twenty seventh.
Okay.
Um, and then the Board of Selectmen would see it, or they would meet around March fifth-ish area for them to look it over, and then they would send it back to us. We would schedule a public hearing, the hearing would have to be by Thursday, April fourth. Um, and then after that, we would send it off to, back to the town to get put into public.
My point is, if we meet it by the twenty eighth of February. I need two or three meetings from the planning board to review it, so we needed a minimum. Probably the minimum at next meeting, we need a draft of this bylaw so we can start reviewing, because otherwise we don't have time.
Right.
Yep, and that's what, that's what we sent off, but we haven't heard back, so.
It's too tight.
We've we've got too much of a, we've had such a problem just coming up with proposed district, never mind a T or an I or a dot here or there.
Melissa, what did you say, um?
That I sent this timeline off to Sarah and Barrett Planning Group, and we're just waiting to hear back from them, I haven't.
I'm not going to go with that.
Um, I sent that on the twenty first, Thursday, the twenty first.
September?
Yeah.
We started following up again.
We are here from him, do we have another um contact that we can check on?
No, so I think Sarah's the the point person.
Right.
Uh, and so I think.
What if that person is available or something, do we have some backup?
No, I've only been in.
We are, initially meeting was with Judy Barrett.
Okay, yeah.
So we could, but I think it's more of a waiting for the scope of work to be finalized so that they can get paid for work they're doing.
Yeah.
I think that's not the issue, then she should not return.
Right, and it's not unusual that we wouldn't have been told that, with some sense of when it might be done?
Well, we still don't have really the official approval that we have been approved money-wise to continue the work.
Okay.
So, um, that being said, we're gonna try to keep the schedule as, you know, um, liquid, yeah, as possible, but it's, you know, likely not gonna happen for May.
I did actually say to the um, Whitman has original agreement amendment meeting last night, we may have a false special committee because I didn't expect this to meet the May, just given, yeah, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, so we should, we we can only do what we can do.
I was just gonna say that very phrase, yes, yes, as soon as we get something from Barrett, we'll pass it on.
So that's what we were, we were just waiting on their final.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Right, so but in the meantime, you you you're gonna vote on what scenario you're gonna adopt, they have the bylaw written, do I have that right?
Yeah, we'll see.
We have, just once they give us the final proposal for everything that we asked her to change and everything like that, we'll vote on it.
It's written, yeah.
Yeah, but we need to be able to see the final proposal, just to make sure that something isn't over here that we didn't want, uh. But I think we have all, I think she has all the final, they would just need the final numbers.
Yeah.
The ratios, the final map of what it's gonna look like and all that.
If I can keep the um industrial park scenario?
I think we're gonna stay with what we proposed, that way we can just keep going, so.
Mr. Chair?
I've got a question.
Yeah, so I bring it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked at length about it so we could try and get that tight timeline.
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, trying to give ourselves leeway even within what we looked at as doubtful. Uh, so, uh, yeah, so that's where we are, uh, the beginning of stage two, we have. Not officially, because we don't wanna look at a new map and say, oh yeah, we approved it, and then it looks like this.
Gotcha.
But this is, this is where we're going with it, once we get that, we wanna get the bylaws started immediately. But May is still cutting it close, even, you know.
So we proposed last, uh, last.
We were pushing for May.
Everyone at the town seemed to want, who was there that night, anyway, it seemed to be the best way to go.
Okay, now, if we have a public hearing, and I have a room full of people, a hundred people, and they're enviously against. Lot A, just on saying lot A, can we change and take lot A out and put lot AA someplace else at the public hearing? And does that throw everything off? That's why I think the public hearing should be overly tight to town meeting. We should have some baggage with the public hearing and town meeting, case there's something that comes up during the public hearing, then we say, oh, we didn't see that.
Well, in all likelihood, if this ends up being filed, that will give.
Give us a some.
The schedule.
But I'm still thinking the public hearing, we should tighten the public hearing, we should leave some space in between it.
Well, to get.
So we can have some changes if we need.
If we wanted to make May, this was the only scenario that works.
It does all that.
So that's why I'm, no, but I'm saying that's why this dates, yeah, if we're not doing May, then.
Well, if it, we're not doing May, we scroll it up a little. We still should do.
Yeah, we'll keep going as soon as possible, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They could give us a couple of months, yeah.
Does the public hearing have to be so many days before the town?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, yeah.
It does, has to be within sixty five days.
Sixty five, I believe.
Yeah.
At least sixty five days or more than sixty five days.
No, it has to be within, no.
I think within sixty.
Within, it has to be sixty five days or sooner.
So that probably being in September for November, say, something like that, end of September for November.
Yeah, I'll get a watch, be on the side of that schedule.
Yeah, and then the other, we wouldn't wanna have a town meeting too close to the presidential election, in town constituency.
Right. Oh, golly, so many things.
We want the primary, which is September.
Or the, you know.
So you probably want it in October.
We probably want October, and we.
Can we have a special time meeting anytime? Does it have to be November?
No, we can have a December special meeting, this ha, this would have to be finalized by December thirty first.
Okay, I'm just curious, that's why I'm asking, I didn't know if it had to be May for town meeting, a special town meeting had to be in November, that's why I was asking, okay.
Schedule a special.
Okay.
We are absolutely trying to avoid cutting it that close, I don't even want this to see November.
Yeah, September also.
September is preferential.
Really, that makes the most sense anyway, John?
Yeah, I mean, it involves, but, I mean, yes, you can alter the proposal after you have a public hearing, and that's the point of having a public hearing, so. You say, oh gee, we didn't think of that, you know, it's not like, you know, give it is, take it or leave it. So you're right, there should be, and, you know, you you wanna have enough time to have the public hearing, a chance to make any changes. Before it gets printed and put in the water, I mean, you can change it on town meeting floor two, but with the zoning bylaw, that's a, that's a disaster.
Yeah, let's let's avoid that.
I have a question, do we have the date for the special town meeting yet?
Oh, yes, yeah.
No.
No.
So as soon as we have that, we go back sixty five days and have it?
Yeah, so the, I mean, the special time meeting, this is currently the only issue, we may have one or two regional school agreement amend, uh, yeah, regional agreement amendments. Um, if things go well, that would be at that same town meeting, so.
And what about the regional school, the uh?
South Shore?
South Shore region.
So that would be the other original agreement that would maybe be able to amend, that's only if the South Shore Tech School Committee agrees to open it. They make the amendments and send it to all the towns, but that would probably be the fault if that happens.
Yes.
Pretty busy town meeting, John?
I just another thing I'm, Barrett, I mean, if if what's holding it up is Barrett basically getting the approval of the state for funding. If the state is made aware that, you know, if you approve it in the next week, you might not have a shot at ending this kind of, then, you know, maybe. We can kind of help in any way to push it along.
Yeah, but did you see the budget cuts today?
Yes.
So it was all.
This, the grants technically through the NAS housing partnership, I don't know where they get their funding, but it's a dedicated state streamer.
Because frankly, I I think once Barrett knows they've got the money, I can't imagine it taking that long to come up with a draft bylaw.
I would think they would almost have it, red, copy pasta, hit and change a few, you know, yeah, seriously, yeah.
Yeah.
They're just.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're all over the place, they have the template.
Does the board want me to send off an email right now just following up and just asking Sarah if if this is what we are waiting on and what a timeline would look like once you get approval?
Sure, please, please do.
Yeah. Because if they could grind it out in a couple of weeks, you know.
I also have no problem meeting the third Tuesday if we needed to, go over something, if that's okay with you guys, to get this. You know, I have no problem with that, have an extra meeting during the month, a move to a meeting.
If you've got a whole.
That's the twenty first, that's that's too long to not get back to you.
You need to have, if you advertise to the public hearing, you gotta have the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, mm-hmm.
So people can inspect it, and so you gotta advertise like two, at least two weeks before.
And we would need it completely done before then, because we have to send it to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen have to send it back to us before we can even do that, so it would really.
Even if they create and have some, like nine years somewhere.
Yes, yeah, yeah, but so even before that, we would have.
Something like by the end, the end of February, the planning board would have to approve a draft bylaw, so you basically gotta, you know, a month to do it. Barrett could get it done by the uh.
So let's see what they say.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably our next step then, I guess, so.
Alright.
You know, if there's anything you need, just let us know, if anything you need, you know, if something comes up, you need to speed something up, we'll do whatever we gotta do.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have anything else, we have minutes?
Minutes, that's it.
Alright.
I sent the minutes off in the email, but Wayne does have paper copies, if anybody would like to look at the paper copies. We have three, the two November meetings and the December fourth meeting.
I read it while I, I sat in a truck all day today, so.
Good night.
I backed up, zoomed in and read, although I'm not good at fucking situations, so.
I will check.
John, thanks a lot, man, I appreciate your help.
Thanks, thanks, John.
Have a good night. Anything good in the mail, while we're reading over?
Brandon's gonna open it up.
Mail call.
We should just stop on whatever.
So, sorry, leaves, oh, the signed book.
Oh, um, I.
Thank you.
I'll write the calendar, I can tell you I don't have the copy in front of me, thank you.
Well, if no one is busy on Wednesday, January third.
So the first set of minutes would be from.
That was an accident.
Thought you'd get.
November fourteenth.
I make a motion to set the minutes of November.
Second, wait, if I was here.
Is everyone here for that?
Every, I believe everyone.
Fourteenth, I wanna, I was here.
Second, Valene, all in favor?
Yes.
Alright.
Yeah, Brandon.
I'll say, but I'm sorry.
The second set of minutes is for November twenty eighth.
I make the motion to the set of minutes of November.
Was it here? Motion, Valene? I'll second that, why not, I'll get to go ahead. All in favor, they accept those?
And then the last set of minutes is just Tuesday, December twelve, twenty twenty.
Make a motion to set the minutes of December twelve.
Motion, Valene, you're second? Second, Wayne, all in favor, they accept the moments, minutes of December twelve? Alright, did anything else, Valene? Motion to adjourn?
We just wanna have way, have a meeting, not even one.
Motion to adjourn? Alright.